Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting. It's three o'clock right now. So anybody that's attending can jump on. See that anybody else is going to be live. So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll just do a quick roll call. So Commissioner Balderas. I don't see that Angie has joined us yet. Commissioner Ekstrom. Here. Commissioner Hague.
Yeah, I'm here.
Commissioner Jordan.
I'm here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Maderos. Nelson is here. I'm not sure if he's having an issue with his mute button, but I'll go ahead and mark you as here. Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Nelson. Don, I see you up there.
Here.
Commissioner Alcott.
Here.
Commissioner Robleto. I don't see Felipe on just yet either. Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Okay, and then as far as staff goes, I am Gwen, the city clerk. And I also have Jennifer Brown, our IT manager, on, and we will hopefully shortly have Christine Mollenkopf. On. Mark Scott, our interim city manager, said he was gonna jump on as soon as possible. But I don't see any attendees, so I don't think we're gonna have any public comment unless the commissioners would like to comment. You will have a portion at the end of the meeting to do so as well. So I'll go ahead and mark down no public comment. And we'll jump right into the introductions. So let's just do it alphabetically. So Commissioner Angie Balderas, I don't see her on yet, so we'll go to Commissioner Ranny Ekstrom.
Yes.
If you'd like to introduce yourself.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ranny Ekstrom. And I'm living in Sun City, Lincoln Hills.
I'm not kidding all the people.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hague, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
How you doing? I'm Jeff Hague. I live in District Two.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan.
Yes, hi, everybody. I live in Sun City. And I am a retired professor of psychology.
Thanks. Commissioner Lewis.
This is Dave Lewis. I also live in Sun City, and I'm a retired engineer from Silicon Valley.
Thank you. Commissioner Maderos, hopefully you're able to.
Can you hear me this time?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, Nelson Maderos, I live in District One, forever person of Lincoln.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore.
My name's Richard Moore. I've lived in Lincoln for the last seventeen years, and I'm retired from law enforcement.
Thank you. Commissioner Nelson.
Yes, I live in Lincoln Hills, and I'm retired law enforcement also.
Thank you. Commissioner Alcott.
I'm Steve Alcott. I live in Sun City, Lincoln Hills, and I'm a retired family physician.
Thank you. Commissioner Robleto.
Hi, this is Felipe. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I apologize. I was just now able to get on. And what were the questions?
We're just introducing the members.
My name is Felipe Robleto. I live in the Courtyards area. And I'm just happy to be here to help contribute.
Thank you. And Commissioner Stewart.
Hi, I'm Joe Stewart. I live in Sun City, Lincoln Hills, for the last nine years plus. I was in real estate lending. I was on the board of directors at Sun City, Lincoln Hills.
Thank you. So I don't see Angie on, so she must be having some problems. And the next item on our agenda is the legal aspects of redistricting. So we have Ryan here, as well as Michael Cohen. So if you'd like to share your screen, whichever of you is going to do the presentation, please just go ahead and share.
One second, trying to do it here.
And Gwen, you might want to have everyone mute.
Yes, thank you.
I want to talk over Ryan, but.
Yes, thank you. Please mute yourself if you haven't done so already.
Okay, great. So yes, as Gwen mentioned, my name is Ryan McGinley Stempel. I'm a partner with Rennie Public Law Group, which advises and advocates for public agencies across the state. Many of our attorneys, including our founding partner Louis Rennie, who was the city attorney for the city and county of San Francisco for many years, have served local governments throughout their careers, including as city attorneys, before journeying the firm, and we're all very deeply committed to serving the public interest and excited to help with the redistricting process for the city of Lincoln. I regularly advise on a wide array of legal issues and have recently done a lot of litigation defending local ballot measures. And I'm joined by my colleague today, Michael Cohen, who litigated voting rights cases during his time with the UCLA Voting Rights Project and has written extensively on racially polarized voting and how that impacts districting. So without further ado, we'll get started. So I want to start with sort of what we're gonna talk about today. We're gonna cover some procedural redistricting requirements, some substantive redistricting requirements, and then some of the practical considerations facing Lincoln in particular. On the procedural side, you have things such as the line drawers, the requirements for hearings, the type of outreach that's necessary, timing, record keeping, the fact that it has the Brown Act applicability. Substantively, we'll get into that a little further, but there are both federal and state requirements that the commission has to abide by. On the procedural front, there are a number of issues. To start with, the line drawers, which in some cases, the city council or county board of supervisors here, as we know, is an independent redistricting commission. You've got, you have to have, under state law, hold at least four public hearings, at least one before the draft maps are drawn, at least two after the draft maps are drawn. And those are, you know, those meetings after the draft maps are perhaps most important because the public has in hand proposed maps for the jurisdiction. We've already got, I think, five, at least five public meetings scheduled on the calendar for this commission, so I think that's great. The more public input you can encourage, the better for setting yourself up for the most legally compliant maps you can draw. The public outreach requirements goes hand in glove with those public hearings. And that entails encouraging public participation through media outreach, community groups, translation if requested, online notices, the publication of the draft maps and relevant demographic data, and then the receipt of that public input. And that's where those meetings after the release of the maps are so important because you're digesting all of that information that's come in as a result of the public outreach. Timing is a little, you know, has been, as many things with the pandemic has been a challenge, but the legislature, and right now, things seem to be in hand. The current, where things currently stand is basically one hundred and seventy-four days before the election between Jan. 1, 2022, and July. 1, 2022. So what we're looking at with the COVID delay, I think Lincoln has a November 2022 election as the next election. So that would mean requiring to adopt that map by May. And the city is tentatively planning to adopt the final map by March. So we're leaving a cushion there to make sure that we're following the deadlines there as adjusted by pandemic-related delays. The record keeping also goes hand in glove with this notion of public outreach and considering all of the different community input that comes in the door. You've got a record of every public comment and the governing body made available to the public within two weeks. There's a public webpage. We're hosting, Flow is helping to host. There's a webpage for the Independent Redistricting Commission for the city of Lincoln that will be sort of the primary touch point for those things. And that includes maintenance for ten years and excluding, including an explanation of the process, calendars, notices, agendas, summaries of meetings, draft maps, and adopted maps. And that's required under state law. And I mentioned notices and agendas, and that brings me to the Brown Act, which does apply to redistricting commissions. And it requires public access to local government meetings during the redistricting process as a result. And so generally, redistricting meetings for the commission must be noticed with an agenda and open to the public. That notice, as we're doing today, that notice for regular meetings is typically a seventy-two hours of posting of the agenda. For special meetings, under certain circumstances, twenty-four hours, and vanishingly unusual emergency meetings under specific circumstances. But that's certainly not, that's the exception, not the rule. And the agenda has to contain a brief description of each item, a business to be transacted, and close up. Any closed session items would be a session with legal counsel outside of the public ambit would have to be included on that public agenda. And those can only be done in certain particular circumstances. I think most important for our purposes here is that anytime the commission is doing its work with respect to redistricting, it should be, it should be doing so in one of these, in a duly noticed and agendized meeting so that it's complying with its Brown Act obligations. Because if you otherwise, if you have a congregation of a majority of a legislative body somewhere without abiding by the the Brown Act to hear, discuss, or deliberate on any matter within its jurisdiction, then you run into problems. So that's a procedural consideration that's important to keep in mind. And that brings us to the more substantive criteria that's where the rubber's gonna really hit the road on the redistricting process. I think my colleague Michael will be getting into a little more of this.
Great. So AB 849, or the Fair Maps Act, sets out the redistricting criteria for California. Criteria are just the standards by which districts are drawn. These criteria are ranked, and they also implement a few changes for this decade's round. So changes include restrictions on the consideration of incumbency and political party, that's partisan data, and also a new prisoner policy that we'll talk about. So here are the ranked criteria. The most important are at the top. And what I mean by most important is that in the redistricting process, you want to meet those most important criteria first. And generally speaking, you must not sacrifice the higher-order criteria to meet lower-order criteria. So the criteria are as follows. First is the federal criteria, equal population, which is a constitutional requirement, Federal Voting Rights Act, Section Two. And then the state criteria, contiguity, communities of interest, identifiable, natural and artificial boundaries, and compactness. These criteria now appear exclusive, but you could potentially consider additional criteria as long as they're not in conflict or outweigh these listed criteria. So for instance, if you want to keep district numbering or election sequencing the same for as many voters as possible, you can do that under state law. And again, there's a new restriction on partisan data, so districts can't be adopted for the purpose of favoring or discriminating against a political party. But we're gonna talk through each of these criterion. So the highest level criterion is population equality. This is a constitutional requirement. California requires total population equality based on census data, but there are some exceptions to that. So state prisoners are excluded from the city's population unless the city's in their last known place of residence. And then federal prisoners are excluded from the reapportionment base entirely. The way to actually determine district size for the purpose of figuring out whether you're complying with population equality is a process in which the total population of jurisdiction is divided by the number of electoral districts to be drawn. So the resulting number is called the ideal district size. Here in Lincoln, there's almost fifty thousand residents, so the ideal size would be about ten thousand, but a little bit under. But you do have a little bit of wiggle room. So while congressional districts have to be as nearly as equal as possible, local electoral districts, like Lincoln City Council districts, can deviate from the ideal size to serve other valid governmental interests. And the most important other valid governmental interests are just the state mandated redistricting criteria in AB 849. So there's said to be a ten percent deviation safe harbor of presumptive constitutionality. What that safe harbor means is that as long as voting districts don't deviate more than ten percent, you're generally considered to be in compliance with the Fourteenth Amendment. But that safe harbor isn't a guarantee, so it's important to always be aware of population equality and make sure it isn't sacrificed as you redraw district boundaries throughout the process. So the second criterion is Voting Rights Act. To best understand the Voting Rights Act, it's first important to understand vote dilution. So district lines can affect the relative weight of a vote in an election. I'm sure you all know. Drawing district lines that reduce the impact of a voter's ballot is vote dilution. This is the mechanism on which gerrymandering relies. So there are two types of vote dilution. The first is cracking, which is when you disperse a voting group among districts so that they're ineffective as a voting block. And by ineffective, I mean they can never form a voting majority to elect their candidate of choice. And there's also packing, which is concentrating a voting group in a district so that they constitute an excessive majority, diluting the minority vote in adjacent districts. And by excessive majority, I just mean more voters than is necessary to elect your candidate of choice. So the Voting Rights Act is where most litigation is going to be this decade in terms of redistricting. Voting Rights Act, Section Two prohibits district maps that dilute the vote of racial, ethnic, or language minority voting coalitions. But it doesn't always apply. It only applies where a minority group can form an effective voting block. So that is, they form a group that is over fifty percent of the citizen voting age population in the jurisdiction in a district with otherwise valid boundaries. So the Voting Rights Act doesn't require actually maximizing minority electoral power, but it does require giving minority voting coalitions a fair chance where they could be effective in a hypothetical, single-member district. So what it requires is that where you have a minority subgroup of that size, you must draw a majority-minority district or a district in which a majority of voters are that racial or ethnic minority. It's also important to note the Fourteenth Amendment applies to redistricting, especially as it operates in conflict with the Voting Rights Act. So the Fourteenth Amendment prohibits maps drawn for the purpose of undermining a minority group's electoral power, but it also forbids the use of race as the predominant criterion in drawing districts. So that might give rise to a bizarre shape that tracks racial landscapes in a jurisdiction. But it's not a blanket prohibition of the consideration of race. And as we'll talk about a little bit later, you can consider race, for instance, when looking at communities of interest. But this creates a difficult tension because while the Fourteenth Amendment appears to prohibit the deliberate use of race in redistricting, the Voting Rights Act requires it when potentially effective minority voting coalitions exist in the jurisdiction. So pursuing a race-conscious approach to comply with the Voting Rights Act may be no better than jumping out of the frying pan and into the fire. So how do you balance those obligations that are apparently in conflict? The answer is the court says you can rely on racial data without violating the Fourteenth Amendment insofar as the jurisdiction has a reasonable or credible fear of Voting Rights Act liability absent race-conscious redistricting. That is, if you fail to examine the racial data in the redistricting process, a plaintiff might later bring a successful Voting Rights Act lawsuit. And where potential liability exists, you're only permitted to rely on racial data and draw majority-minority districts as far as necessary to meet your Voting Rights Act obligations. So what does necessary mean? Necessary means drawing districts that ensure over fifty percent minority citizen voting age population in a district that otherwise complies with other criteria without diluting the minority vote in adjacent districts, cracking. It's not necessary, for instance, though, to set a racial criteria for a district, I mean a racial quota for a district, excuse me. So for instance, setting a racial quota of fifty-five percent for a majority-minority district is impermissible. But even where potential Voting Rights Act liability exists, you still must be conscientious about relying too heavily on racial data. So what we recommend is focusing on communities of interest where possible, which we'll talk about shortly. And that'll likely lead to compliance with the Voting Rights Act, and it'll also best meet the needs of the public and further the goals of AB 849, which places communities of interest front and center. So Voting Rights Act is complicated. I'll summarize it in three top points. These are that the Voting Rights Act, Section Two prohibits drawing election districts in ways that improperly dilute minorities' voting power. That's the vote dilution we talked about earlier. Jurisdictions with minority groups that equal over fifty percent citizen voting age population that could be drawn into a district with otherwise valid boundaries, boundaries that otherwise comply with AB 849, must draw that group into a majority-minority district. And finally, in the redistricting process, line drawers may rely on race only as far as necessary to avoid minority vote dilution.
Great. Thanks, Michael. So I'll talk about criteria three and six, which is sort of the beginning. Michael alluded to communities of interest, which is a state law requirement. But this is sort of our first discussion of the state law requirements in detail. And as you might expect, I think that this is one where if you're a visual learner, it makes a little more sense. Contiguity means that you can travel from any point in the district to any other point without crossing the district's boundary. It does include bridges and ferry routes, actually, interestingly enough, under state law. Not that the ferry route point is relevant to the city of Lincoln, but that would still be contiguous. Compactness means that all residents of the district live near one another, best achieved by drawing districts with neat geometric shapes. So a circle would be ideal for purposes of compactness. And it's actually, when we think about the term gerrymandering, it actually emanates from Elbridge Gerry, who was the governor of Massachusetts, and approved a map that looked like what somebody called a gerrymander. It looked like it was very much, even more incompact than this and looked like a salamander or some other creature. And so that's where the term gerrymander came from. So yeah, so those are two important things to keep in mind under the state law criteria. The fourth criteria is communities of interest, and I believe my colleague Michael will get into that.
Great. So this just requires redistricters to minimize division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. So a community of interest is just any population that shares common social economic interests. And they're intended to be included in a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. So all sorts of characteristics might give rise to a community of interest. These are things like lifestyle, economy, demography, geography, any sort of other political subdivisions, like school districts and planning areas, and then vague place-based issues, so things like public safety or environmental concerns. And these characteristics are collected with quantitative and qualitative information. So quantitative information might include American community survey data or other data sources. And then qualitative information comes from the public. So usually, this is done via questionnaires and public testimony. My understanding is that in the city of Lincoln's redistricting portal, there's actually a sheet from Common Cause, which explains communities of interest and seeks public input the public can use to help the city figure out where communities of interest actually are. And importantly, like in other parts of AB 849, it's important to keep in mind that communities of interest don't include relationships with political parties or incumbents or political candidates.
Thanks, Michael. So yeah, criterion five, natural or artificial boundaries. This is an area where you're just trying to make, it can fit in with communities of interest, but you're really trying to make districts as easily identifiable and understandable by residents as possible after abiding by the foregoing criteria. Some relevant boundaries include streets, waterways, hills, other points of interest. So right here, as you can see, the current map portions, District Three and District Five are actually divided by the Union Pacific Railroad. So that would be one example of an artificial boundary. So would State Route 193, for example. But you can think of other natural boundaries within the city that could be, that you could look to as potential boundaries to use in the redistricting process. All right, so we've sort of walked through the legal requirements. And I just want to summarize real quickly. On the procedural side, really important, transparency reigns king and accessibility because without both of those things, you don't have the public input into the maps and record keeping. So the redrawing of the districts and the redistricting can be, you can adequately look to what happened. And the public has an understanding of what happened. Substantively, there's sort of the state and federal requirements that we talked about. Starting with the federal requirements of population equality, trying to get as close to an ideal population in each district as possible, the Voting Rights Act and its intersection with the Fourteenth Amendment, which my colleague Michael described as very complicated, but we're here to help on that. And then tracking the statutory redistricting criteria required under state law, which includes communities of interest, compactness, contiguity, and natural and artificial boundaries. So with that, I will hand it over to Michael.
Sure. So when you distill all of these requirements down, they really boil down to three basic principles. First, maps conform to all basic criteria, the criteria in AB 849, AB 1276, and the federal criteria where possible. Prioritizing the higher-order criteria over lower-ranked criteria. And we talked briefly about what it looks like to actually do that prioritization. Second, any deviation from redistricting criteria is justifiable in reference to testimony or deliberation or other evidence in the redistricting record. In other words, you're doing things for a documented reason. And then finally, any actual or apparent reliance on racial data is justifiable as a response to a credible fear of Voting Rights Act liability, which requires you to study upfront where potential Voting Rights Act liability might be and responding appropriately. So to finish off, we have some practical considerations for the commission. These include bearing in mind that AB 849 includes really a renewed focus on communities of interest. So gathering public input and helping to define these communities of interest early on is really of critical importance. Maximizing opportunities for public input is obviously incredibly important. Normally, we might recommend holding more hearings than the legal minimum, which is for diversifying the times at which those hearings are held, conducting redistricting meetings as standalone meetings. But the city of Lincoln is already doing all those things, so that's excellent. It's also important early on to find ways to collect and organize and digest public input. It can be overwhelming when there's quite a lot of it. And to also develop a system to link public comments and a redistricting body's deliberation to particular decisions. Again, that just goes back to making sure you always have the rationale for particular decisions nailed down in the redistricting record. You want to also develop a system to track draft maps and revisions so that when you have your final maps in hand, you know how you got there. And as I mentioned earlier, you don't want to set racial targets in redistricting. Always want to keep detailed records. And then finally, you want to keep an eye on shifting deadlines as the state-level redistricting commission, the California Supreme Court and the legislature actually work toward finalizing the state's timelines and election dates. The timeline could be further delayed, but as Ryan mentioned, Lincoln is actually in great shape with that respect.
Great. Thanks, Michael. Yeah, so that's our presentation on the legal requirements and the backdrop. I think we're gonna move on to the next portion of today's meeting, and we'll be available to take questions at the end.
Great. So next, we have Kate, who is going to also have a presentation that she is going to share. So hold on. She'll get that up on the screen here.
Here we go. Can you see that?
Yes, it's just, it's not started the PowerPoint yet, though.
Perfect. Yep, I'll get that set up.
Perfect.
All right. Thanks, Gwen. So my name's Kate Doran, and I work for Flow Analytics. And I will get into Flow in a little bit, but I'm going to do a redistricting overview for the commission. It will sound somewhat similar to what Ryan and Michael just presented. But in learning this stuff, I found it helpful to hear it a few times to make sure I've got it sunk in. And I'll also be presenting some of the data and maps. So we've run the Census 2020 data, so you can see what we're working with and what we will have to be adjusting throughout this process. So Flow Analytics is a subsidiary of Mall Foster &amp; Alongy, which is a consulting firm based in Vancouver, Washington. I'm actually based in Maine at the moment. And so we are a GIS and data analytics firm, serving local government. And so we are a GIS and data analytics firm, serving local governments and school districts. So we've been doing redistricting work for a long time and mostly doing school districts up until, you know, we've got the census data, we've got this process we're going through. So we like to take a very impartial, very data-driven approach to redistricting. We've never worked for a political party. We have experience with lots of school districts and local government districts, you know, port authorities, everything like that. But currently, we are working on, I want to say, over fifty redistricting projects with counties and cities across the country. So first, I want to talk through, there's kind of two parts of this process. So there's the outreach and engagement part, and then there's the analysis part, just to kind of get everyone up to speed on how the outreach and engagement part is going to go. So like you heard from Ryan and Michael, we're holding public hearings. This is a public hearing. It's also your first workshop as a commission. And one of them has to be held before you draw a draft map. So that is, you know, that's what we're here to do. And then we will get into drawing draft maps in the next workshop. And then we are, you know, engaging the community through, you know, a website that lists every all the meetings and everything like that. We have pre-map meetings, online mapping tools, and then we'll be collecting feedback, especially about communities of interest and district maps that the community is able to be a part of the process and say, you know, I want to make sure that my community is considered as one, you know, place that's all within one district and incorporating that feedback and considering that from the community. So the redistricting engagement website is at redistricting dot Lincoln C A dot gov. And that has all of the information that we have available at the moment. You'll see a couple of coming soon, like the mapping tool. But that is continuously being updated. So I'm working with Gwen and and other city staff to make sure that we're, you know, keeping this website up to date throughout the whole process. So if anyone wants to, you know, check that out, please keep coming back to that for, you know, updates and, you know, updated links, agendas, meeting minutes, things like that will all be posted there. So the timeline that we are looking at, so we launched the redistricting engagement portal website in June so that we could get applications for this commission. So it's been up for a little while. The IRC was selected. We are now at this green public hearing workshop one. And then the you'll see the next thing that's coming up is this launch district scenario modeler on the twenty-third. So the reason that we don't have that launched for you yet, even though we have the Census twenty twenty data, which came out on August twelfth, is that the California state database releases their data on, they are saying that they will release it on September twentieth. And that is due to the, you know, taking prison populations and assigning them the addresses of where they were living. And so that process California is going through right now. So we will likely get you an updated set of, you know, tables. It will probably be fairly similar, but we will get updated numbers. And then we didn't want to release the tool until we had the final California-approved set of data. So that will happen by the end of next week, so that we can get that all set up. And then we will have the working group sessions, two through five, in October and November. And I believe we're going to talk through dates for when those will be during this meeting. But those will, you know, will be happening. And basically, you'll be getting together with me and other flow demographers. And we will be looking at the community feedback that we will be collecting on the website. So once this tool is available, the community can draw maps, add testimony and submit that information. And we will be collecting all of that and bringing it to the working group sessions and working through, you know, how we're going to kind of redraw those districts. And then the in, you know, kind of between the working group sessions and public hearing two, Flow will work with all of that information to create these scenarios for this public hearing number two, get more community feedback. And then we will do preliminary options at public hearing three, get more feedback. It's good feedback process. And then public hearing four will be, this is the map, you know, that the city council is approving. And there has to be a first read and a second read for that. So there's public hearings four and five. So that's the overall process. It goes all the way into the end of March, so I will be there for the whole thing. But I'm excited to start getting into the the working group sessions as well. Just wanted to give you an overview of how the whole process is going to go. All right, analysis, which is my strong suit. I am a GIS analyst, a data analyst, but I also have a lot of experience in public meetings as well. So I'm excited and facilitation. So I'm excited to work with everyone. This will look like a repeat, but it bears repeating. We will be doing all of these on the slide. So we are population balancing, making sure everything's contiguous. That's the easiest one. Doing everything in compliance. So when, you know, it's fine to have draft maps that we're kind of kicking around where we are, you know, trying to get to this, you know, ideal set of district boundaries. But, you know, in the end, anything, any draft that's kind of put out there is has to be in compliance with all of the local, state and federal laws. We're not disfavoring or disfavoring a protected class or a political party. We don't even have political parties in the tool for that reason. Districts should be, you know, as compact as possible. They can't be circles. We know that that is not the shape of the city of Lincoln. But we will be working on, you know, making sure that they are as compact as they can be. Looking at communities of interest, you know, getting that feedback testimony from the public and ensuring that we are taking that into consideration for communities that would like to stay within one district. That can be school districts, homeowners associations, lots of different examples of groups that could consider themselves, you know, one community. And then trying to use existing administrative and natural boundaries, like Ryan was saying. All right. So if you haven't looked at it in a while, here is your current district map. So this is directly from the city clerk's office page. So if you want to go there and check it out, that map is on there. I did not make that map, but I love the colors. So we've got the, you know, you can see districts one, two, three, four and five. So this is what we are starting with. So when you see the the data that I'll be presenting in a little bit, if we're looking at the twenty-ten census data and the twenty-twenty census data, it's with these current districts, because we haven't redrawn the districts yet at all. So we're kind of looking at how much work do we have to do to balance the population out? So like Ryan was talking about this, and Michael, the balancing population piece of it, the tool that we have gives you these numbers. So it's really nice, because it tells you the deviation from that mean. So we're looking at total population for balance, citizen voting age population potentially for if you need to have a majority minority district. But for balancing, we're looking at total population. The principle is that all the city council members represent all of the residents. So the deviation from the ideal population, the ideal is total population divided by five districts. And that some of the deviations between the least populated and the most populated is where you get that. You know, we want that to be under ten percent. And so that's what we will be looking at with the data. So drumroll, please. Here is the updated census data for for the city. So we'll look at the twenty-ten data. So you can see that overall range between the lowest and the highest is six point five for twenty-ten data. So great, under ten percent, pretty far under ten percent. You had a city population of forty-three thousand. The ideal district population at the time was eighty-six, about eighty-six hundred people. So you have for these districts, you know, you can see they're all pretty close to eighty-six hundred. District one, almost on the nose. So you can see that the, you know, district two was three point five percent above that ideal with, you know, two hundred and ninety-eight extra people. But that could be because they were in a community of interest, and that was the trade-off, you know, that was decided. And then you've got District Five, which is three point one, you know, under. So you've got that overall range of six point five percent, but it's pretty well balanced. So when we look at the Census twenty twenty data that just came out in August, we have an overall range, which is the difference between the lowest and the highest of thirty-three point eight percent, which you guys might win, or the highest, you know, updated deviation from that mean, which just means, and you guys probably know this because you live there, there's been a lot of growth and development in one district or two districts, and maybe some people moving out of another one. So very typical, you know, thing to happen if there's a a city that's experiencing growth. So now your city population is closer to almost fifty thousand. So your ideal district population is about ninety-nine hundred. And then now we're looking at, you know, how many people, according to the twenty-twenty census, live in your current districts. So we have District One and Three have a lot more people than that, you know, than that ideal. And then you have Districts Two and Four that have a lot less people. So you would be looking to expand Districts Two and Four out and retract Districts One and Three to, you know, make them a little bit smaller. Districts can be redrawn. You know, we do try to keep people in the district they are in as much, you know, not completely redrawing all the districts and doing all new boundaries. So you can imagine it as this kind of push and pull between a neighboring district and wanting to expand the boundary to make sure that those two districts have the same number of people. And you can see that, you know, District Four only went down about two hundred people from ten years ago. But now it's at, you know, minus sixteen point seven, because the whole population has gone up quite a bit. So then you've kind of got this measure of, all right, how many people are we talking here, you know, to balance this out? And you can start to see these patterns, like if you could, you know, move these seventeen hundred or so, doesn't have to be perfect, people from District Three into District Four, it would even those two out. So, you know, maybe that's a strategy that we look at. Maybe there's a community that can be moved between these two districts. Or maybe we're looking at another area to make sure we're keeping communities, communities of interest together and looking at a trade-off with another area. So it's just this iterative process that we get to go through to try to get to, you know, what the best district boundaries that preserve communities that are contiguous, compact. But you can start to get a feel for, you know, the work that we will be doing. Go to, so here's what this looks like on a map. If you don't have your districts memorized yet. So you can see that this map has the twenty-ten to twenty-twenty population change. So the difference in population is here. The lighter colors are less. So, you know, District Four lost some population in the last ten years, and District Three gained the most. You know, so maybe there's, and District Two actually looks pretty good, you know. So we're going to have to figure this out, because District One gained a lot. So sometimes that kind of cascades, you know, into different areas. But this is kind of what it's looking like so far. So you had Three had the most growth, and then One. And then Two, Four and Five actually had a lot of growth as well, had fourteen hundred people added to that district's population. All right. So this map looks like it goes a little bit outside the lines. This is census block groups. So we don't do our analysis with block groups, because it goes outside the lines. But if I colored in the census blocks, it would be, it would be very small. So this is just kind of an aggregate, shows you a little bit more detail about if you just focus inside of the of the city, kind of where was that growth happening? And you've got this area in Five, this area in Three, and this area in One that we're like adding to that population. So in the mapping tool, we actually use blocks, which are even smaller, and you're really able to get at that detail and see how that's going to change the population. All right. So we already heard about Voting Rights Act and demographics. But here's, you know, the same graphic with different colors, but trying not to break up, you know, a specific population and really not, you know, we're just not, we're not sending out to hurt voters and, you know, try to draw a line straight through, you know, potential community of interest or, you know, racial racial or ethnic, you know, group of people, minority group of people within the city. So when we looked at the updated data for twenty-twenty, you have, let me just bring up this table. So we have the percentages, like percent by non-Hispanic by race, and then Hispanic or Latino is all the way on the right that's highlighted in green. So in your districts, you actually have higher percentages of, you know, Hispanic or Latino, but they're all broken into, you know, several districts. So that would be something that would trigger that citizen voting age population analysis, which we will rerun when we get the new data next week. But the idea is that when you look at that, you know, data, it's looking like this community has been, or this group has been, this minority group has been split into, hasn't, wasn't before, but with the new data, it is now split into several districts. So this would be something where we would have to focus on this when you're all working on the maps and, you know, coming up with your criteria and your areas that you want to keep together. This would be an area that we would, I believe, be required to try to create a majority minority district within the within the city. And so I can show you what that looks like when we look at the the demo of the tool later. But it is just something to start thinking about, and it is something that we include in the tool, so it's really easy to see. You know, where where are those communities? What districts are they in now? So we have communities of interest and also have racial and ethnic data in the in the tool. But specifically, you know, this is what we are looking at with the twenty-twenty data. And so we will have to make sure that we are paying attention to that as we are making these draft maps. All right, communities of interest, I believe we talked about, but this is where we really need, if the public is watching, this is where we need the public to chime in and give us that kind of testimony when we've got the tool posted on the website saying, hey, I consider this area a community of interest. I consider it this, you know, for these reasons, and here is my map. And this is how I would like to, you know, have my community represented in within a district. So that's where we're getting this information throughout the fall from the public and trying to make sure that folks are able to, you know, use the tool and provide that testimony so that we can use it in our analysis. So we have school districts data, we have homeowners associations data, so we have that GIS data. But there is, you know, there's not always GIS data for, I consider this neighborhood a community. You know, that's where we really need to hear from you who live in those communities and the general public. So we make sure that those are included in the analysis as well. So your school districts, you know, for example, I tried to give it very school-based colors. You know, you could, I think, First Street Elementary, it's too small to be its own district, you know. But you could draw a district boundary along that elementary boundary, if it made sense. If that community considered, you know, if that area considers itself one community, just making sure that some of those areas are, you know, and completely contained inside of one district. It might work out, it might not, you know, with how many people live in these areas. But we have this data loaded into the tool, and we can add other communities of interest into the tool as well so that you can see, like, am I drawing, you know, are we drawing these boundaries in a way that makes sense? And tries to preserve these areas. So that's just an example of a community of interest. There's several. All right, contiguity, compactness, I believe we've kind of covered these enough. I don't believe you have theories that we need to consider. But, yeah, major streets are a good place to start, like, well, what if we took this whole area on the west side of the highway? Would that work? You know, just, it's kind of build them logically, you know, when you're looking at it, does it make sense? Is it not stretching out, you know, trying to grab an extra set of people? And that deviation from the ideal, we're looking for under ten percent. We're looking to, you know, get as low as we can while we're still keeping these in mind. But we also, you know, understand if we're going on the other side of a river because of the community of interest or if we are slightly overpopulation, but it's because we are, you know, following all these other criteria. There's some give and take there, and so that's really what the process is for, to hone that. So the flow process, you know, we're collecting data right now. We have data from the city of Lincoln already. We've gathered all the census data. We will be, you know, getting We will be, you know, getting, uh, community input, we will be creating scenarios for, um, the commission to, you know, work with at the workshops and and, uh, you know, being able to kind of think through these different, um, ideas. It's a process that, you know, sometimes the the districts feel kind of like, well, they've been that way, so it's hard to imagine, you know, what it, what it could look like. So we try to help with scenarios. Um, community input, and then we do revisions, and we've got the preliminary max public hearing, more revisions, and then the final. Um, so it's just this kind of process where, uh, you know, I'm the gears process a lot of the time, um, and working through that. Alright, so the next steps, I know I gave you this whole timeline going all the way out to March, um, but the next steps. You know, immediate focus, we're launching the tool next Friday, by next Friday. Um, it'll be available for the public, um, the commission can check it out, you know, just you can kind of start to understand the data. For the workshops, um, it will, we will really be asking the commission to bring ideas, you know, you don't have to bring a map scenario, so that's kind of like what flow is here for, is to help synthesize all of this and make these, you know, scenarios, but ideas about your communities, um, you know, about areas that you think shouldn't be split by districts, areas that you think should be contained. All of that information, uh, will bring to that first workshop. And start to synthesize that information and start getting a list together of priorities, um, and what should we be trying to keep with these districts? Um, so no homework, don't have to do any, uh, making any maps or anything, but the tool's available for the public, you can definitely check it out and start to get a sense of the data. Um, we've got the workshops in October and November, and then the public hearings will be next year. And we will, Gwen and I will be sending out more information about your workshops as well. Alright, so the next thing I'm gonna do is do a demo of the tool. So Gwen, I don't know if you had anything in between my presentation and the demo of the tool, or if I can just, if you want me to just
No, yeah, just keep rolling along, thanks Kay.
Great. Alright, so yeah, you guys can definitely check it out on the website when we've got, and we'll send you an email. Um, when it is available, and then we really want, and if you know people who are like this, my community was split by the last one and I don't want it to be, or we weren't split and we want to stay in this district. That's where you direct them to this, this map, and it has a survey component as well. Um, where they get to say, this is why we really, you know, want to stay together, and we'll be recording all of that, um, forever, for the next ten years. So, um, alright, so let me go over to the map tool. And I'm going to just walk through it before we start clicking on anything. Um, so I'm gonna just kind of walk through each part of this tool, so we've got the total population. That is twenty twenty census, that, that's now. Um, we've got the number of districts, five. Ideal population, the goal, you know, but we know we're using block groups, we, or blocks, we don't split them, so you're not gonna get it perfect. Um, but that's, you know, you've got a number in mind that we're kind of aiming for. Um, so you can choose a different base map. So right now we're looking at streets, some people are very Google Maps, very streets oriented, they can find their way with streets, and then some folks, myself included, really like satellite imagery and would rather be able to zoom in and find my house, you know, and that kind of thing, or like, oh, there's the golf course, um. So folks can use either one, um, streets is a little easier to look at, you know, once you've kind of got your orientation, but we've got the two options. Um, the edit mode, you can view existing boundaries, which, you know, is kind of, I'm not able to edit this map when I'm viewing the existing boundaries. Um, it just shows you, like, here's, you know, districts one, two, three, four, and five. Um, by block groups, so that's what, or by blocks, that's what the little, you know, tiny pieces are. Um, and then draw new boundaries is how we are going to have the public create maps, um, that are what their ideal is, you know, what they want to see. So I will get into the draw tool after I'm done kind of explaining the other pieces of this dashboard, um. If you're working on a particular district in the draw tool and you want to filter down to only that district. Um, if you turn these all off, the whole map will disappear. Don't panic, you haven't broken it. And then you can click on district one, um, and it will show the, you know, just that district. So if you were like, I'm really interested in trying to figure out how to get district one down to the ideal, you know, you could just kind of focus on that for a little bit, and then come back and, you know, turn the rest of them on, and, you know, work through them systematically that way. Um, so that's just a filter, if it's easier to look at them one by one, sometimes it is. Um, this choose race, race ethnicity data source, so right now we're looking at total population, that's what you want to do for the total deviation, you know, that's what, we're looking at total population for balancing. But when you want to look at assigning areas, since we know the Hispanic population should be, should have a majority minority district. Um, that's the citizen voting age population like Michael was talking about, so it's not the total, we're looking at citizen voting age population. So you can choose that, and I'll look at that later when we've kind of zoomed in. But you can choose that to make sure that you are keeping that group of people inside of one district. Um, and making sure it's at least a fifty percent, you know, um, fifty percent or, you know, more, uh, area. So we'll just keep it a total population for now. Uh, total deviation um, is currently, you know, thirty three point eight, so once we start kind of editing this map, it's going to change. Um, and so ideally, it would not be red, you know, you would get it down below ten percent. Um, but I think you'll start to see, it's, it is like, uh, it's a push and pull, so it's we're trying to get it below ten percent, but this whole community wants to stay in one district, and the highway's right there, and this is happening, and it, you know, it's trying to figure out the best way to do it, um, you know, while keeping that low is, it's tricky, that's why it's a longer process. Um, so over on this right side, the, um, you can filter the blocks by race ethnicity, you know, for analysis, so if you were looking at in this case, we'll just look at Hispanic or Latino, because we have looked at the, um, the population, and you do have the selection detail at the bottom. So you can see total population, um, in the city, and you have the different groups here. Um, and what percent of the total, um, are in these groups, and then the citizens, so CBAP is citizen voting age population here, percent of CBAP total. Um, so what you can do, you know, you kind of get a sense overall, and if you filter by district, this table will always update. If you filter by something, it'll update the table, so you can kind of see, oh, okay, here's what's happening inside of this district particularly. So we have, you know, this kind of the, the, um, block with the highest percent Hispanic or Latino population is ninety percent. Um, and so it's just automatically filling that in for that group. Um, and it's showing everything because it's showing from zero to ninety, so it's including zero as well. If you grab this slider, and these are all just like data investigation tools, like ways to look at the data and see what's going on, um, with the twenty twenty data. So you can see, like, it's pretty neat, like, it starts to hide the blocks that have, now I'm at ten percent, so everything here is ten to ninety percent Hispanic, and then if I keep moving it up to, you know, twenty percent. Um, these are all the block groups that, or blocks that have from twenty to ninety percent, and if I kind of keep going. Um, you know, you can see these start to, this is now thirty percent. So you can start to see an area here that's probably a community of interest, this is probably an area you'll want to look at keeping inside of one district that is currently split between, um, I believe, one and two. So, you know, you can start to look at the data and say like, oh, okay, this is where the blocks are that have this population that we are going to try to keep in one district. Um, not the whole thing, but have a district where fifty percent is, um, Hispanic or Latino. Citizen voting age population. So we'll keep going through this, um, that's why we have the workshops as well. Um, to make sure that we have, um, you know, that we're creating districts that meet all of these requirements, um, as well, so we'll kind of you know, have almost a checkbox for each of our draft maps that we make and say like, does it meet these things, um, and how well does it meet them? Um, so the other thing to note in this tool is the communities of interest. So right now we have your HOAs and your school districts loaded, um, so I, our school attendance area, sorry, within the school district. So if I load the school attendance areas, just wait for them to come up, so here's the, um, elementary schools. If I hover on these, you can see which blocks are inside that elementary school attendance area. So, you know, that, not a requirement to keep all of the students within one school, to keep all of their parents in the same district, but it starts to help you see how these other boundaries might come into play. Um, you know, especially if it's like a neighborhood school and everybody does consider themselves in the same community, you might start hearing from those parents. Um, so you have this other elementary school, which is over here, it's in three different districts. First street is in three different districts, um, and then if I click, so you can see, I'm just kind of hovering over these. If I click on this, um, Ranch Elementary, it filters it down. So you can see that the table updated, so we're just looking at what's on the map. This is the folks that live in that area that's shown on the map. So this is that elementary school attendance area, you can see it's in two districts, um, and you've got this update on the map or in the table. Um, and if you ever click on something and you filtered it down, you just click anywhere outside of that, and it will, uh, remove the filter. So that's just a way to like investigate, what are we looking at here? Um, you can also look at HOAs. So we can look at, I heard some folks said that they were in Sun City, so if I hover over this one, this is the Sun City kind of HOA boundary intersected with those blocks, and you can see that it is in two different, um, districts. So that might be something where you're like, actually, we all consider ourselves one big community, and we'd like to be in one, you know, in one area, and you might get that feedback and find that you know, there's, if I click on it, let's see here. We'll get the table to update in the corner. So the total in that whole area is ten thousand, which is actually about, you know, how many people we need in one district. But the way that the districts are shaped, you might have two other districts wrapping around it or something. You know, you might not have that compactness if you put all of Sun City in one district. So just, you know, things to think about, but this data is starting to be loaded into this tool. And if we get communities of interest information from the community, we can load it into this tool as well, and you can say, okay, this area, they wanted to make sure they were all, you know, considered one. Um, one area, so we can load that into. Okay, so that's the whole dashboard, what's going on in each part of this tool. The cool thing that we can do that is like the fun part, I think, is to draw new boundaries. Um, so if I hover over the map, you're gonna see this plus sign, which is a zoom in, this is all very close to, similar to Google Maps. Minus sign, zoom out, you can also scroll forward and backward to zoom in and out. Um, and then this, uh, sign or this arrow takes you to, you know, this is the pan around the map, the like grab the map and move around. Um, this is a zoom to a specific area, so if I drag, you know, you get the instant zoom, um, into that area, and then you can zoom back out. But the three other tools here, um, in this menu are select tools. So I can select with a box, which is a little clunky because of how the block groups are shaped, so you can see with the dark line, I'm starting to select them. Um, you know, but I'm not maybe getting everything that I want, because it's, you know, it's a square and I need something that, I, you know, want to draw something that's a little more specific. But it, you know, you can use the rectangle, um, you can use this, um, circle one, which again, if you wanted to start in the middle and go out a certain amount, um, you know, maybe that might be helpful, but again, it's like, I just want to draw the area that I want to include in the district. So we just selected those for me. So let me unselect those, there we go, and all I did was click outside of that area to unselect it. Um, so this tool is my favorite, it's called a lasso. And you click on this one, and then we can select exactly what we want inside, if we just kind of draw the shape we want to select things within. So, you know, we know that, um, uh, let's see, so I'm just gonna try to like pick an example, so we have district three. Um, oh, and I didn't explain these little guys on the side here, so we've got district three here, um, so if you hover over the middle, highlights it for you, the colors also match, helpful, um, it's showing you that they are, uh, one thousand seven hundred and one people over at the moment, um, and that's seventeen percent over, um, over what we, what we want. And then the outside of this shows the breakdown by race and ethnicity within this district with the twenty twenty data. So just kind of helpful to see some quick stats about each of these districts. Um, so what I'm gonna do is turn off everything except for it's gonna run, when it's posted on the website, it doesn't do these executing queries anymore, once we've got the final. Um, so I'm gonna show, um, so two, district two looks like it needs more people, and district three needs to, you know, have fewer people. This is gonna be very basic, because it's not including all of the other information, you know, that we will be getting from the community. Um, but I can turn these off and say, I'm just gonna work on two and three, and let's see how we can go. Alright, so I'm zooming in, um, and say we want, and I've got my, um, lasso tool selected. So say we're thinking, okay, we have this parkway. And this looks like a good natural boundary, um, and we have two needs more people and three needs fewer people. So what if we draw this line to include and select that group? And what we're going to do is, um, right-click on this, and so it, we're currently in district three. So this is something that is, you know, the way the tool works, you have to remove them from the district they are in, and then they will be unassigned, and then we need to put them in another district. That's basically, you know, the way that we're able to reassign them, it has to be this kind of two steps where we so we're removing these blocks from district three, and they will be unassigned. And I am going to turn on the unassigned ca- category just showed up, and it'll be gray. Um, and it's going to throw off the deviation, because now we have these, this sixth district that is unassigned, but in the end we won't have any more unassigned, uh, folks, we're gonna assign everyone in the end. Alright, so I have these unassigned, uh, areas, and we want to try, and you can see district three has come down to only being two hundred and seventy people over, so that's not, you know, terrible. Um, so we're going to select this again, and then I'm gonna assign it to district two. And see, uh, this add blocks to district two. So all I'm doing is changing the codes behind the scenes, um, so we're saying what if we try moving this area from district three to district two? How does that look? So now we've got the deviation, um, you know, we've brought it from thirty three percent down to twenty seven percent, and district two is, it's a little over, it's four point eight percent over, district three is two point seven percent over. Um, you know, so it's, it's a little exercise, but it does show you that maybe that's an area that you want to, you know, consider, or that we kind of mess around with. Um, and then I can turn, you know, I can turn them all back on again and zoom out and see what does that look like? Um, or, you know, this area might not be on the table. Maybe it is part of this community, even though it's on the other side of the road, and we need to look at other, you know, options. So it's going to be this whole process, um. Let me go back to my pan tool here. So now we've kind of created this, this, you know, this is a new option, um, all we've done is changed this one neighborhood. So you could really see kind of getting in here, and, and we hope the public does this too, where you can really get into this tool and try to move these pieces around, it's almost like a puzzle, and try to get that deviation down. And then come back and look at the, um, communities of interest and see, you know, did we keep them all in one place? Are they still split? Is that still okay? Um, so we're gonna have all these conversations, and we will be using this tool in, um, you know, flow will basically be creating scenario maps based on this criteria, and then we'll be using this tool in the, in the meetings as well, um, kind of live. So we'll be working on this, you know, to come up with these different scenarios that, uh, we can present to the city council. I believe that's all with this, um, with this demo. Um, really, it's, you know, even if I had this filtered by district, doesn't have to be filtered by district. Um, you can go to the select tool and say I wanted Um, you can go to the select tool and say, I wanted, say District Four has always really wanted the golf club as part of their district. Um, then you could go in and, um, remove, remove blocks from District, District One. We'll just assign it. I don't think there's, I think there's 12 people that live there. But maybe it makes it more compact in the end or something like that, you know, like District One extends pretty far across the top of the city and is not as compact. So maybe this is a way to, you know, um, make that, make that area more compact. Um, all of these are contiguous. Um, so that's not an issue, but could be something like that. And then I'm going to add it to District Four. So you don't have to filter anything out. You can just click on the blocks and assign them from, you know, remove the assignment and add the next one. Um, but then this is what your, you know, District Four might look like. And maybe it makes sense to grab they still need more people. Um, they are minus, you know, 1,600 people. So maybe District Four takes this part of District One. And that makes District One more compact. District Four is still compact, you know, so that kind of process of what are the thoughts? What are the ideas? Who, who needs to stay together? Who needs to be represented? Um, yeah. So this will be up on the website by the end of next week. And what we really want is the public to submit testimony maps throughout the fall. Um, we will have this video that will be up there and we'll have some instructions as well that we post, um, with the tool so that folks can sit and try to, you know, it, it's almost like a, like a, a puzzle where you're trying to get that deviation lower while taking all these other things into account. So we hope the tool is helpful for that. All right, Gwen, I think that that is the end of the scenario model or demo.
Yeah, I just had one question and then I'll open it up to see if anybody else.
Yeah, I would love questions.
So I was just curious, uh, is there a submit button or, you know, how do you save that map once you're all done?
Very good question. So this is the, you know, the tool that we have right now that we are waiting for the, uh, recently, you know, updated or about to be updated California data. So what will happen is on the website, there will be a button that says, you know, go to, um, you know, district tool. It will open a new website and the website will have this tool and, you know, the users kind of scroll down and they can see, you know, they can make their map and say like, you know, I'm done with my map. And then they answer some questions and at the bottom they hit submit. So it's kind of like a, a website where they make the map at the top, they answer questions, and then they hit submit at the bottom.
Great. Thank you. So I'll open it up to see if any of the commissioners have questions. Don't see anything. So, oh, I do see a hand raised. Commissioner Lewis, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, and drawing these maps, yeah, as you mentioned, we got a whole bunch of people moving into Sun City. And a whole bunch, uh, on the other side of, um, Joyner Parkway and then especially over off of 193. Are these maps strictly based on the, um, the 2020 census or do we take into account, um, uh, growing neighborhoods a- as well?
The population balance has to be based on the 2020 census. Um, but if you, you know, if there's an area that's halfway developed and the other half is a field and it has no population, you could include it in the same, you know, district because you know it's going to be developed and it wouldn't affect the population balance, if that makes sense. So we can take that type of, this is going to be a future development, let's keep it, or it's, you know, partially developed. Let's keep it in this district as long as the population stays balanced, then, you know, we can take those considerations into account.
Great. Uh, Ranny, it looks like you have a question. Go ahead.
Yes, it's, um, will we have this tool available for us to play with?
Yeah. So when it's on the website. Yeah. So you'll be able to use it when it's up on the website and then you can investigate the data. Um, in the workshops themselves, we will be, you know, I'll basically be driving the map for us. Um, and, you know, creating, I, I'd have to go back and look, I think we're making three or four different scenarios. So the idea is that, you know, by the end of the process, we would be saying, here's one idea, which is splitting District One and sending it to District Four and doing this with District Five. That's one idea. Another idea is splitting District One and pairing it with District Two and doing this. And, you know, so we've got a few maps we're kind of working on at the same time. So we're not trying to, in the beginning, we're not trying to come up with one perfect map. It's kind of four ideas that we are putting out, um, to the public to say, what, you know, what do you, what do you think? What are we missing? Um, is there a map you like best, you know, or least? Um, yeah.
So Gwen, if I could chime in on that last, um, commissioner's question, there's a couple of issues tied up in that. So first of all, we are, you guys are stuck with dealing with the current data that comes from the census. Um, so there are a couple of rules at play. Um, when it comes to annexations, um, there is a certain population basis that determines whether you have to redistrict or not. Or whether those, um, annexed properties, because this is, this is a big issue in Lincoln. We've got a couple of annexations in process right now. Um, unless there's a certain population base that is going to be annexed into the city, then we don't have to go through a redistricting process. They can just be annexed into like the most regionally based district. So I wanted to make sure that was clear because it, I, that's, that's a big issue in Lincoln. And I know that, uh, the commissioners online probably wanted to know that.
Christine, um, Nelson, uh, Maderos, Commissioner Maderos, please go ahead.
Yeah, uh, the, the, the question I had was, um, is this gonna, is this, uh, tool, this program going to be able to be used by anybody in the, the public? It's, I, I'm assuming it's strictly not based just to commissioners. So anybody could use this, come up with a, a different format and submit it, uh, to the city as well?
Yes. Yep. And I can show you, I have the website here. Um, so we have a dry your own map coming soon, end of September, section of the website. So it will be there with, you know, more information. Um, so the public can come in here and, you know, use, use the map tool. Um, and we actually have a district scenario modeler support email. So if anyone's having trouble, you know, if anyone from the public is like, I'm trying to draw this map and I don't understand something, you know, we have like a flow support for this tool. Um, that they can, you know, we can respond and try to help them with, uh, drawing these maps. So.
Great. So I don't see any other hands raised for the commissioners. So I'll go ahead to the public. We have a few people online. Do we have any questions? Okay, Mr. Garabedian, please go ahead. You unmute yourself. There you go.
Congratulations, commissioners. Uh, I'm Mike Garabedian. I live on Shelbach, which I guess is in the northernmost district now. And I, I came too late into the last process to be effective in the process. Uh, so the, uh, the ideas I had weren't really reflected in the maps that were proposed. And it seemed to be too late to propose another map. This was kind of an interesting factor. The two issues I'd like to point out is that, as you saw earlier, the Hispanic population was divided in two and it was divided along Fourth Street. And I raised a concern about that, that because Fourth Street has the heavy, just the street itself has the heaviest population of Hispanic names on each side of the street. It seemed like a no brainer to me, uh, but the council adopted it and one member said they, they're just adopting the whole thing because it's coming up for very soon for, for the process year in now. The other, the concern I approached it with is I'm in what I would call Old Lincoln. Some people don't agree that it's called Old Lincoln. Uh, but I feel it's, it's the streets that are basically the square rectangular blocks. And, um, so, uh, I've, uh, my bias frankly was that Old Town ought to have its district, the, the old, old part of the city. Um, and I thought about that because one of the council members thought that Old Town should be part of each of the five districts. To me, which was sort of like breaking up the district instead of respecting that it should have its own, uh, own district. So, um, I, I just wanted to, uh, make those two points because there was that history that happened on dividing Fourth Street, which I, I thought was a mistake. I don't, I'm not saying that it was illegal, but I think there was a legal question about whether that should be done, but I'm not an expert on this area of law. So it can't really, it can, all I can do is suggest it as a concern. So, uh, really thank you for this opportunity to, uh, to weigh in right now.
Thank you. Uh, I don't see any other hands raised. So we'll go ahead and, uh, move, oh, I do see a panelist, uh, Commissioner Baldaros, welcome to the meeting.
Sorry I was late. I had a question, I had a question on the HOAs. The HOAs that you put in were just the H, the, are they just the larger HOAs? Because I know for a fact, I do live on Shelbach as well. And the houses that are behind us, those, because I used to own a house there as well, those KV homes, those are HOAs as well.
Yeah. So I think I can go back and make sure that that made it into the, into the, uh, data. Um, but that might be something, I'll just check with Gwen on the, and Jennifer on the data.
And I mean, there's, and there's smaller HOAs as well. My son owns a home on H Street. There are only four houses and it's an HOA. I mean, I don't know if that's that important, but I'm just letting you know.
Yeah. If it's areas, they might be areas that are bigger than lot, census blocks, like an area of four homes would be contained within, potentially within, hopefully, within one census block. Um, but we definitely would want to make sure that we aren't splitting a, a small HOA in half, um, between two districts. So yeah, that, we can look at the, at the GIS data and see if we need, you know, if there's anything else we need to add in.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Um, so as Kate said, uh, right now we're not working with the tool that'll come next week and, and beyond. Um, but what we'd like you to think about right now are communities of interest, um, as Mr. Garabedian just expressed his. So, um, we'd like that to be discussed at the next, um, workshop. So we do, um, with that, I think we're ready to move on to the next item, which was going to be, uh, nomination and selection of chair and vice chair of this commission. So if anybody would like to either nominate, um, somebody or, um, volunteer to be a chair, vice chair, I do know we have a couple of people that have had experience, um, with committees and other nonprofits. So please, um, we do need a chair and vice chair just to kind of keep the meetings organized when we start voting on maps. So, eh, thank you, Commissioner Lewis. You need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, we, we just met each other. How can we go around nominating chair and vice chair a- at this, are you expecting that to happen at this meeting?
Well, um, you know, we're not going to have a whole lot of interaction other than the work sessions, which may, I, I think most of these meetings are probably going to be virtually. So I don't know, I can certainly take, um, you know, that was kind of the introduction period, um, to get a feel for who we are. You know, if you'd rather put this off to the next, um, meeting, we can do that. And you know, if you'd like to send in a bio or if you'd like to volunteer to be a chair or vice chair through that process, we, we can certainly do that. Christine, do you have any other suggestions? She must not be right at her, um, computer to unmute herself. So, um, unless I see any other hands going up, which I don't right now, we'll go ahead and just, um, postpone that item until the next, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Hague and Commissioner Nelson both have their hands raised. Uh, Jeff, go ahead, please. Jeff?
Yeah. Good luck. Wanted to nominate Joe Stewart for, uh, for the, uh, chair position.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Stewart, you're, you need to unmute yourself.
Mute. I need to pass on that. I've got just too much going on in my, in my world for the next four, five, six months. Um, it's just not going to work well.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Nelson, go ahead.
I thank you though.
Well, uh, I'd be more than happy to help out in either, you know, either position at this point, but, uh, I, I have to kind of agree, we don't know each other at this, at this point, but I have had extensive experience in public service, uh, environment with Brown Act and those type of issues. So I, I could help out in any way that, uh, the, the commission would prefer.
Who's speaking? Who, who was, who was speaking?
That was Commissioner Don Nelson.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And Commissioner Angie Baldaros has her hand raised. Go ahead, Angie.
Is it possible that we could meet like in person? Like, I know because of COVID, but I mean, can we like meet for coffee or something? Because I think it would be helpful.
Well, no. So this is a Brown Act body, so it has to be a notice meeting. And at this point in time, council has, um, put that on hold. We're holding 100% virtual meetings right now because of the rise in COVID numbers. So until we hear further from the city council, we are not holding any public meetings at all.
Okay.
So, um, eh, Commissioner Hague, you have your hand raised. And let me go ahead and lower everybody's hands and then if you'd like to.
No, that was a mistake. I'm sorry.
That's okay. And, uh, so if anybody else would like to volunteer, um, otherwise we can postpone this, um, until next meeting. So I don't see any hands raised. So I'll add this to the next meeting agenda. And we'll go ahead and move on to, um, the future meeting schedule. So, um, right now we have a working group meeting scheduled on October 6th. Another one scheduled for October 21st. Then November 3rd and November 16th. The November meetings will be, if needed, um, all of those meetings are scheduled at three because we do have, um, consultants that are out of the area that are three hours ahead of us. So we have to kind of work with everybody's schedules. So, um, I did ask in an email and some folks said that schedule works fine for them. If you could just please let me know, um, if you know right now, go ahead and let me know if that works for you. You can just put a, or you can send me an email afterwards. We are trying to get a, um, you know, we, we have this information on the website. We do e-bulletin. So as soon as we get a firm schedule for the public meetings, we'll put that in the e-bulletin. I'd also like to get a notice out in the utility billing. That way that would get to almost all of the residents in the city. So I'd like to get this meeting schedule firmed up as soon as possible. So I can get it in either the next utility billing or the following one. But we will be working with holiday schedules if we go much beyond November 16th. So that's why we kind of condensed this into October and November because otherwise we're getting into Thanksgiving and then Christmas. So.
And 21.
Yeah, I'll leave, i- if anybody would like to make any comments, um, please go ahead. Uh, yes, Commissioner Olicott.
So, so just to clarify, these meetings are all going to be virtual because of the COVID issue currently, Gwen?
Right. That's correct.
And the two meetings, number four and five, what will determine if those are needed, whether or not we've come up with a map by working group meeting number three?
Well, i- it's going to be, uh, if we do a utility billing insert, I think we're going to need at least one November meeting just because of the timing. It's, it's mid-September. I don't think I'm going to get it out quickly. Um, but I do have a meeting tomorrow, um, with our insert company or our billing company to discuss this. So, um, but I think what's going to determine is if the level of participation we get from the public and then what the commissioners feel like, if they need to keep going to, uh, create draft maps, then that's going to kind of push the, whether a meeting is necessary. It's going to take a little bit to get familiar with the tool and the census blocks. Um, so for sure, we're going to probably need to at least. And then beyond that, I'm thinking at And then beyond that, I'm thinking at least one in November, but I don't know if we'll need both.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I do see a member of the public has their hand raised, so, um, any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Lewis, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious. Um, we have, um, the district Commissioners and then we have Members-at-Large. Is, is there any difference between the two?
Yes. I don't know if they would like to explain it, but, um, our flow analytics is, is mainly dealing with the mapping tool. And then our legal group is determining whether the maps are, comply with all of the rules and, um, requirements from those federal and state laws. And I'll let them add anything else that they'd like to, but that's basically the difference.
I don't think you understood my question. Now, we have the district Commissioners and then we have the, uh, the Members-at-Large on this Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In, in between the two.
No, they're all Commissioners. It's just the method of selection. So we were required to have one member from each district, and so we selected those first. And then we had at-large members. We had six additional members, and that, so those are spread out throughout the city.
So yeah, this is the City Attorney, Christine Malinkoff. So yes, our, our duty as charged to us by our City Council was that each district have at least one member representing on this committee. And then anybody who applied that didn't get picked for that one district went into a pool, and that's where we chose the, the other members from. But one vote is one vote, there's no weighted scale here.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we do have a member of the public, Mr. Garabedian, please go ahead.
Well, thank you again for a chance to, to weigh in here. Actually, I think the, the, uh, City Attorney would be able to answer or, or deal with this issue. Uh, because I'm not an expert on the Brown Act, but I believe that there is a way for, to get acquainted if the Members want to talk to each other. There's a possible way to do that without violating the Brown Act. Perhaps the Council could, such as individually, but then there are certain limits. So perhaps the Council could help understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there an answer to what he just suggested?
I'm, I'm not entirely sure that I understand the full complexity of the question, but I think at this point, um, it's something that I can take under consideration and come back to the body with. We, unless, I think we may have exhausted public comment on that issue. I don't know, Gwen, where are we on the agenda?
Sorry, yes, we are, um, we're done. We can go on to the next, um, item, which is Commissioner comments. So I don't know if the Commissioners have any other comments?
Okay.
Uh, yes, I, just a basic question or, or a, or a comment. Uh, some of the things that have been discussed already by, uh, let's see, was it, uh, the flow representative as well as a member of, at large, was to, uh, consider some of the communities. For example, Sun City, Lincoln Hills. I believe that's, we, we would probably view that as a, as a group, as, as a special interest, uh, however you want to carve it out. We have, we're basically the same demographic. We don't have kids in school, you know, those kinds of things. We may have grandkids in school, but not our own kids. And then again, I also think like old downtown. I tend to think of that in my mind as probably an area also. So I'm suggesting perhaps to start would be, um, starting with some of those considerations as well as some of the new developments that might consider themselves a, um, a, a community as well.
Thank you. Uh, so Commissioner Maderos, please go ahead.
Uh, yeah, no, I, I'm in agreeance with obviously what kind of Rand's comments is, so I just want to piggyback on hers, um, along with the, the comment from, uh, from the public there as well regarding, you know, some of our districts that we're currently at, kind of divided communities, uh, known communities, whether it's a development from HOA, developed from active adult communities, developments from downtown. Um, we're going to do our best, obviously, make sure that we keep, uh, those communities, um, as one and not try to divide right down the middle. Because even like Sun City, as she mentioned, i- it's divided into two different districts where that's kind of one community. Uh, so they, you know, the ideals are there. Um, it, some of the things she highlighted, though, the demographics aren't there because they're solid. There's, they're, they don't have children there, they don't have, you know, even though there's, they're linked into a school district, I don't know what school anybody's attending from Sun City. Uh, so our, our, our goal is obviously that we're going to, uh, try to carve this out as, as best we can without, with keeping the, the populations at that 9,600 to 10,000 range per every five districts. And that's kind of, uh, why I kind of wanted to join on this Commission is to make sure that, you know, we all see kind of eye to eye that, uh, a difference of a community from across the tracks is a difference from a community from the north end of town to the south end of town. So, um, we'll, we'll make, uh, Lincoln a pretty great place by doing so.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Kot.
I just wanted to get back to the, uh, issue about the Chair and Vice Chair. It seems like if we can't meet, if anyone's interested, it would be helpful if they could put something on the website that the rest of us can look at so we can elect somebody at the next meeting. Is there a way to do that?
Yes.
So I would encourage any of the Commissioners who are interested or have experience and are willing to take on that responsibility to put out a little bio or something that the rest of us can review. And as Mr. Lewis said, it would be helpful for us, I think, if we're going to have to pick somebody to do that, uh, if there are more than two people willing to step forward and take those positions, because I think those would be important. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Stewart?
Um, yes, am I muted?
Yes.
I would first like to, to mention that I'm hoping that we'll get hard copy of the things that you showed on the screen, particularly in the first half, as you raced through it. Um, and, uh, it's a lot of Greek to us that are not used to the governmental, uh, side of, of things and maybe are to the HOA and other kinds of, of volunteer organizations, structures. Um, so it would be nice to see that, that stuff in print that you rolled through about the whys and wherefore's and the can and can'ts, um, to, to be able to get, send a copy of, of that or email a copy of that.
Absolutely. I'll send it out after the meeting.
Sure, appreciate. Uh, beyond that, so sort of, I wanted to also give my apologies. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm zooming from Washington DC at the moment where we're, where we're sightseeing. And, uh, I, my, my MacBook isn't working right and my, uh, uh, iPad is what I managed to get in on, and I had, I see nothing except a very large Commissioner comments and a bit of City of Lincoln, and that's all I get to see. My picture is none, you guys' picture is none, wasn't sure who was talking, and it's a mess. And I apologize, but that's my problem. I'll be home for the next one, although I'll have one to miss, I think, in the early first, first November meeting. I may be out of town and may need to zoom that as well. Uh, but in any event, I'm glad to be here and, uh, even if by Zoom and by screwed up, uh, zooming methods. I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nelson, go ahead.
Uh, two items. First, uh, I think everybody received, uh, the copies of, uh, everybody else's applications that showed descriptions of the career.
No. No.
I did.
No.
No. It was part of the meeting minutes, but I'll, I'll resend that as well.
Okay, yeah, I, they, they, rather than everybody having to go through and do, uh, additional work in that, I think if we just transmit that, it'd be great. And the, the, the second item relates to the question on the Brown Act. And, uh, we have to be very careful with that. They're even including emails where you have a chain showing more than two people. Uh, we got caught in Placer County inadvertently by the email process of sharing emails with other Commissioners. And, uh, we had to really backtrack on it. Unfortunately, we didn't get into any real problems. But it's usually two or more people, uh, and I'll, I'll defer to the, 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 uh, the City Attorney. But, uh, it, it's, it's a process that no matter what we do, we, we have to be very careful on the 72-hour notice and what we can act upon at the time. So, uh, that's the importance of public comments because we can't take action on what the, 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 the community wants to do at the point. It has to be agendized at the next meeting. So there's a, there's a lot of varieties in there, but I just wanted to give a little information on, on, uh, to you people up there that the Brown Act is something that, uh, we just can't go out as a social group and, and, and have a good, great discussion and, and meet.
And, and I, and I appreciate those comments. So as the City Attorney, um, I'd be happy, maybe it, maybe at the next meeting, Gwen, I give a quick, um, update, kind of educational presentation on the requirements of the Brown Act. I know that I think we've distributed some information, but, um, you are a Brown Act body, and that means that a majority of you cannot meet, and you cannot have, you cannot circulate emails amongst yourselves that constitute a majority. Um, and so it's, it's important that you take that responsibility seriously because all of your personal emails, um, text messages, everything are subject to Public Record Act requests. Um, if someone were to contest that there were, was a Brown Act violation. So it is a very serious obligation that you have undertaken, uh, this evening. And I'm sorry that if we did not express that to you more clearly during the application process. Um, so Gwen, I'll, I'll leave it to you, and I'll leave it maybe to the body if they think a, a little quick tutorial on the Brown Act requirements would be helpful to them at the next meeting. I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Christine. Um, yes, I can add that to the next agenda. And I will say also that if you have any information that you'd like to communicate to the rest of the Commission, please just send that to me, and then I can make sure that everybody gets the email. So please just filter the information through the clerk. And we will be adding, um, meeting minutes with, um, any documents we receive as well as, um, just notes of action taken at, at all the meetings. And we will be posting these videos on the website, on that, um, portal that Kate showed, uh, earlier. So we probably won't get that updated until tomorrow, but I will follow this meeting with an email of the PowerPoints that were used today. So unless, um, we have any other Commissioner comments, that was the extent of our agenda for today. We do thank all of you for volunteering. Um, it is an interesting process going through the map tool and seeing all the census blocks. And that's why you might see some little weird outliers from Sun City into, like in crossing in the last map, it probably had to do with the census blocks and the number of folks that were living, so. But with that, I'll, I'll just, um, see if anybody else has any comments. And if not, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Okay, I don't see anything, so thank you all. And we will, um, see you, the next meeting is October 3rd at 3:00 PM. So, thank you again, have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.